Good evening and welcome to the June 24th, 2020 Smithtown Planning Board Meeting. Per Executive Order 202 decimal 28 by the Governor of the State of New York, all levels of government must continue to function as normal or as close to normal as possible. In an effort to limit physical public contact due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Town of Smithtown is imposing social distancing requirements. The applicants and members of the public will not be present in the boardroom. However, this meeting will be streamed live on the Town of Smithtown website. The following procedures will be implemented for this evening's meeting. For each application, Mr. Collado will read the Planning Department's report and recommendation into the record. After discussion by the board, the board will recess each application to the July 15th, 2020 meeting. Following today's meeting, there will be a public comment period, at which time all interested parties may mail comments to the Smithtown Planning Department, Post Office Box 575, Smithtown, New York, 11787, or email comments to smithtownplanning@smithtownny.gov. The comment period will close at 4:00 PM on July 15th, 2020. The board may render a decision on each case at the July 15th, 2020 meeting. If any members of the public have questions, please contact the Smithtown Planning Department at 631-360-7540. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited to the [inaudible].
Good evening, members of the planning board. The Planning Department would like to recommend the following items be recessed: Under final subdivisions, 1, number 1184, Skunk's Hollow in St. James, and number 2, number 1180, Old Dock Land Division in Kings Park.
Are there any questions from the board on these recess matters? Okay, hearing none. I move that we recess items 1 and 2 as read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So recessed.
The next item is a request for an extension of final approval for number 1146, Map of Foxwood Estates. And I'm going to show counsel the affidavit of posting. The applicant requests an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision number 1146, Map of Foxwood Estates. The subdivision number 1146, Map of Foxwood Estates, received conditional final approval from the planning board for a four-lot subdivision on September 18th, 2019. This approval is valid for a period of 180 days that expired on March 16th, 2020. The applicant submitted a request for an extension on March 12th, 2020. The Town Board accepted the performance bond on April 7th, 2020. The planning department has no objection to the request and recommends a retroactive extension of 270 days. Typically, the board grants 180-day extensions. However, the applicant filed for the request over three months ago, and the planning department recommends an additional 90 days due to the time lost during the coronavirus pandemic. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration: Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2020, Extension of Conditional Final Approval for Number 1146, Map of Foxwood Estates. Whereas the planning board has considered the request of Vincent J. Tramarko for an extension of time to the conditional final approval for Number 1146, Map of Foxwood Estates, now therefore be it first resolved that the planning board hereby approves a retroactive 270-day extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision number 1146, Map of Foxwood Estates, to expire on December 11th, 2020.
Okay. In the matter of Number 1146, Map of Foxwood Estates, I move that we recess the hearing to the July 15th, 2020 meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion adopted.
This is the affidavit of posting for the next item, which is Platt and White Platt. Good. The applicant requests an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision number 1173, Map of Platt and White Platt. The subdivision number 1173, Map of Platt and White Platt, received conditional final approval from the planning board on May 23rd, 2018. The subdivision has received three extensions of approval, with the most recent one expiring on May 12th, 2020. The applicant is requesting a fourth extension in order to obtain more time to receive Suffolk County Department of Health Services approval. The applicant submitted a request for an extension on May 8th, 2020. The planning department has no objection to the request and recommends a period of 180 days. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration: Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2020, Extension of Conditional Final Approval for Number 1173, Map of Platt and White Platt. Whereas the planning board has considered the request of Vincent J. Tramarko to extend the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as Number 1173, Map of Platt and White Platt, now therefore be it first resolved that the planning board hereby approves a retroactive 180-day extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as Number 1173, Map of Platt and White Platt, to expire on November 8th, 2020.
Okay, in the matter of Number 1173, Map of Platt and White Platt, I move that we recess the hearing to the July 15th, 2020 meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion adopted.
The next item is a extension of conditional final approval for Map of Winters Estates. The applicant has requested an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision number 1183, Map of Winters Estates, for a period of 180 days. The final subdivision of Number 1183, Map of Winters Estates, received conditional final approval from the planning board on June 12th, 2019. The subdivision received an extension of approval that expired on June 6th, 2020. The applicant submitted a request for an extension on May 18th, 2020. The applicant has indicated that they need additional time in order to file the map with the Suffolk County Clerk's Office. The planning department has no objection to the request and recommends an extension period of 180 days. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration: Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2019, Extension of Conditional Final Approval for Number 1183, Map of Winters Estates. Whereas the planning board has considered the request of Vincent J. Tramarko to extend the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as Number 1183, Map of Winters Estates, now therefore be it first resolved that the planning board hereby approves a retroactive 180-day extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as Number 1183, Map of Winters Estates, to expire on December 6th, 2020.
In the matter of Number 1183, Map of Winters Estates at St. James, I move that we recess the hearing to the July 15th, 2020 meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion adopted.
The next item is a final subdivision for Wallya Platt in St. James. The applicant requests final approval to subdivide a 1.96-acre parcel into three single-family lots. The subdivision number 1179, Map of Wallya Platt, received conditional preliminary approval from the planning board on November 20th, 2019. The planning board also adopted a secret and negative declaration for the application. The applicant filed the final application on February 20th, 2020, and has complied with the conditions of preliminary approval. The subdivision fronts Sunny Road in St. James and is located in the R-21 zoning district. The site is surrounded by R-21 zoning and single-family dwellings. The subdivision proposes to construct a 40-foot-wide private right-of-way, East End Court, with a cul-de-sac radius of 50 feet. The proposed pavement is 24 feet wide, and the proposed cul-de-sac pavement has a 40-foot radius. Three new dwellings are proposed. Two dwellings will front the private road, and one dwelling will front Sunny Road. One dwelling is currently under construction. All three lots comply with the minimum lot area, frontage, and setback requirements for the R-21 zoning district. The map depicts a 10-foot-by-165-foot planting buffer along the south side of the proposed right-of-way. This buffer will help screen the road for the residents to the south. Topography of the site is flat and located approximately 120 feet above sea level. The site contains no steep slopes, no high groundwater, and no natural surface water features. Sunny Road and the proposed right-of-way have been identified as residential access streets with low traffic volume. There are no sidewalks on Sunny Road, and it is unlikely that sidewalks will be constructed along this road. The planning department recommends the planning board waive the requirements of sidewalks on Sunny Road and the proposed right-of-way. Section 248 of the subdivision regulations state that each subdivision is required to show a park area of at least two acres per 100 buildings. However, the Court of Appeals has ruled that the town cannot require the reservation of park area unless the planning board determines on a case-by-case basis that the need for parkland exists with respect to the individual subdivision. Based on the community facility study in the town's comprehensive plan, there is a need for parkland in the neighborhood in which the subdivision is situated. The subdivision's share of meeting... The need is approximately 0.012 acres. In cases where the planning board determines that a suitable park cannot be located or is otherwise not practical, the subdivision is required to pay cash equivalent prior to filing the map. Given the location and small size of this subdivision, a dedication for park space would not be practical. Therefore, the payment of an equivalent park fee established at $6,000 is recommended as a condition of final plat approval. The engineering, highway, and traffic safety departments have found the application acceptable. Additional information: Letters assuring availability of utility service have been received from the Suffolk County Water Authority and PSEG Long Island. The Smithtown Central School District has acknowledged a subdivision. 3. The amount of the park fee is $6,000. 4. The amount of the inspection fee is $9,868. 5. The amount of the performance bond is estimated at $123,345. 6. The amount of the cash deposit is $1,500. And 7. The amount of the performance bond to be posted is $121,845. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration: Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2020, Subdivision Final Layout for Number 1179, Map of Wallya Platt. Whereas the planning board has considered the request of Jasper Reed Wallya to subdivide 1.96 acres into three lots, now therefore be it first resolved that the final plat of Number 1179, Map of Wallya Platt, is hereby approved subject to the following conditions: A. Posting of a performance bond in form and amount specified by separate resolution of the planning board and for a term of two years. B. Posting of a general liability insurance policy to run concurrently with the term of the performance bond and in accordance with other provisions of Section 248 of the Code of the Town of Smithtown Subdivision Regulations. C. Payment of an inspection fee and cash deposit as established by separate resolution of the planning board. D. All necessary dedication papers shall be submitted by the applicant to the planning department in complete and accurate form as one package, including but not limited to the performance bond, liability insurance policy, title report, and all required fees. E. The final plat shall include all information required by Section 248.15, 248.16 of the Town Subdivision Regulations. The conditions of approval in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. A check print of the final plat shall be submitted to the planning department for review before the milers are prepared. F. Payment of a park fee of $6,000. G. Final approval of the drainage and regressing plans to the satisfaction of the town engineer. H. A 10-foot-wide planting buffer shall be placed along the south side of the private right-of-way to screen the residents from the south from the new road. The buffer shall be 165 feet in length. The details of the planting screener indicated on the performance bond estimate. I. Prior to the commencement of construction activities at the subject parcel, including land clearing or other site preparation work, the applicant shall abide by the following condition: 1. All limits of clearing and any individual trees to be preserved within the clearing areas must be marked with snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing. Said fencing shall be located no closer to the trunk of any tree to be preserved than the drip line of said tree. This area to be preserved shall be indicated on the Tree Preservation and Land Clearing Plan prepared by Kenneth H. Beckman, Licensed Land Surveyor, dated July 8th, 2019. 2. Upon completion of the installation of fencing as required above, the applicant shall provide written notice to the Department of Environment and Waterways requesting inspection of limits of clearing as marked in the field by sighted fencing. 3. The applicant shall not commence construction activities, including land clearing or other site preparation work, until the marked limits of clearing are approved in writing by the Environmental Protection Director. 4. The snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing used to delineate the limits of clearing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. 2. Resolve that the chairman of the planning board is hereby authorized to sign the final plat, hereby approving said plat, after the Town Board has accepted a performance bond of satisfactory amount. 3. Resolve that the conditional final approval of said final plat shall expire 180 days after the date of this resolution and within 62 days after the chairman of the planning board signs the final maps of this plat, unless said plat shall have been duly filed or recorded by the owner in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2020, Authorization to Sign Performance Bond Estimate for Number 1179, Map of Wallya Platt. Whereas the Town Departments of Engineering, Traffic Safety, Highway, and Planning have prepared a performance bond estimate to cover the costs of all required public improvements, now therefore be it first resolved that the chairman of the planning board is hereby authorized to sign the performance bond estimate for Number 1179, Map of Wallya Platt, in the amount of $123,345, and establish an inspection fee of $9,868 and a cash deposit of $1,500. Therefore, the amount of the performance bond to be posted with the Town Board shall be $121,845.
Thank you, Matt. Does any member of the board have any questions on this before we...
I just have one quick question. Lot 3, is that facing... that house going to face Sunny?
They're proposing that it's facing Sunny.
Okay.
And just also, the applicant submitted in writing, if you want to read his letter, from Vincent Tramarko.
Okay, this is from Mr. Tramarko to the board. Please be advised that this office represents the applicant with respect to the above-mentioned subdivision. We are in receipt of the planning department's recommendation dated June 16th, 2020, and we agree with the contents of saying. Therefore, we respectfully request that the board issue the conditional final approval of this subdivision. And he thanks us, Mr. Tramarko. And any more questions? In the matter of Number 1179, Map of Wallya Platt, I move that we recess the hearing to the July 15th, 2020 meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion adopted.
The next item is a final subdivision, number 1186, Wade subdivision. And this is the affidavit of posting. The applicant requests final approval to subdivide a 2.576-acre parcel into two single-family lots. Just some background: Suffolk County Tax Act number 85121 is lot number 3 within the subdivision Number 111, Map of Oakside Realty. This subdivision has a condition, Condition 4A, that limits the number of lots permitted within the overall development. At the time, Number 1186, Map of Wade Subdivision, was filed, the Oakside Realty subdivision had already reached its maximum permitted lots. On March 6th, 2019, the planning board amended the condition within the Oakside Realty subdivision to permit one more additional lot. That was Planning Board Resolution 9, 2019. The final map of Number 1186, Map of Wade Subdivision, is comprised of one tax lot that is roughly triangular in shape. There is an existing dwelling to remain on Lot 2, and a new dwelling proposed on Lot 1. The site is owned R-43 and is surrounded by R-43 zoning and single-family dwellings. The site has approximately 500 feet of frontage on Oakside Drive and approximately 400 feet of frontage on Landing Meadow Road. The applicant has offered to dedicate a 174.2-square-foot strip of land along Landing Meadow Road in order to increase the width right-of-way by approximately 8 feet. This is consistent with the remainder of the property along Landing Meadow Road. It's hard to see on the small maps, but on the larger maps, you can see that. The site contains steep slopes on portions of the property along Oakside Drive and the center of Lot 1. The site does not contain any high groundwater or natural surface water features. The applicant is requesting the following variances in connection with the subdivision on Lot 1: Alter environmentally sensitive land, slopes in excess of 15%. Build within 10 feet of slopes 25% or greater. Reduce minimum front yard setback from 60 feet to 50 feet. That would be on Lot 1. And reduce minimum rear yard setback from 100 feet to 67 feet. That would be on Lot 1 also. Pursuant to Section 322.30.4, the planning board has the authority to grant the front and rear yard variances. Altering environmentally sensitive land and building within 10 feet of slopes 25% or greater are subject to approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The planning department has no objection to the front and rear yard variances for the following reasons: 1. Reducing the front yard setback from 60 feet to 50 feet is not substantial and will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. In fact, if measured from the edge of payment on Oakside Drive, the house will be set back approximately 66 feet. This is in character with many homes in the area. 2. Reducing the rear yard setback may appear substantial. However, the unique shape of Lot 1 makes it difficult to develop the property without a rear yard variance. Proposed house on Lot 1 has been positioned to the south portion of the lot. This provides adequate distance between the existing home to the east outside of the subdivision. Therefore, it will not negatively impact the neighboring property. The planning department recommends a reduction to 65 feet instead of 67 feet. Pursuant to Section 248.31B of the subdivision regulations, this subdivision is required to be clustered because the fine will be impacted. That's steep slopes and slopes in excess of 15%. In order to satisfy this requirement... In order to satisfy this requirement of the subdivision regulations, the planning department recommends placing a 25-foot-wide conservation easement on Lot 1 along Oakside Drive and a 60-foot-wide conservation easement on Lot 2 along Oakside Drive. This will help preserve some of the steep slopes on the property. The only structures permitted in the conservation easement on Lot 2 are sanitary or septic systems required by the Suffolk County Health Department. Oakside Drive and Landing Meadow Road have been identified as residential access streets with low traffic volume. There are no sidewalks on Oakside Drive and Landing Meadow Road, and it is unlikely that sidewalks will be constructed along this road in the future. The planning department recommends the planning board waive the requirements of sidewalks within the subdivision. Section 248.24 of the subdivision regulations states that each subdivision is required to show a park area of at least two acres per 100 buildings. However, the Court of Appeals has ruled that the town cannot require the reservation of park area unless the planning board determines on a case-by-case basis that the need for parkland exists with respect to the individual subdivision. Based on the community facility study in the town comprehensive plan, there is a need for parkland in the neighborhood in which this subdivision is situated. The subdivision's share of meeting the need is approximately 0.006 acres. In cases where the planning board determines that a suitable park cannot be located or is otherwise not practical, the subdivision is required to pay cash equivalent prior to filing the map. Given the location and small size of this subdivision, a dedication for park space would not be practical. Therefore, the planning department recommends that the board conditional final plat approval upon the submission of a park fee of $2,190, the approximate value of 0.006 acres in the R-43 zoning district. The engineering, highway, and traffic safety departments have found the application acceptable. The Department of Environment and Waterways has found the tree preservation and land clearing plan acceptable and recommends several conditions of approval related to land clearing and site work preparation. Additional information: 1. Letters assuring availability of utility service have been received from the Smithtown Water District and PSEG. 2. Smithtown Central School District has acknowledged this subdivision. 3. The amount of the inspection fee is estimated at $3,426. 4. The amount of the park fee is $2,190. 5. The amount of the performance bond is estimated at $42,830. 6. The amount of the cash deposit is $1,000. 7. The amount of the performance bond to be posted is $41,830. The Department of Environment and Waterways offers the following resolution for the board's consideration: Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2020, Recommended Secret Declaration for Number 1186, Map of Wade Subdivision. Whereas the planning board has considered the secret recommendation from the Department of Environment and Waterways and indicated that any potential adverse environmental impact associated with said project does not rise to the level of significance, which would require the preparation of an environmental impact statement. Now therefore be it first resolved that the planning board hereby declares itself lead agency on this matter and finds that this matter is subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is classified as an illicit action pursuant to secret. 2. Resolve that the planning board hereby issues a secret and negative declaration, a determination of non-significance, or an EIS is not necessary. In the matter of the application of subdivision approval by Main Avenue LLC for Number 1186, Map of Wade Subdivision, for the following reasons: A. The proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York or Smithtown Town Code. B. The proposed project does not involve the disturbance of any lands that contain poor soil properties, high groundwater, or unmanageable slopes. C. This small size and nature of the proposal mitigate against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. D. The proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel incompatible with neighboring land uses. E. The project as proposed on the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by William J. Lottie, Licensed Professional Engineer, dated July 18th, 2019, provides for the retention of a significant amount of existing trees and natural vegetation upon development of the subject parcel. Such preservation shall be ensured by the placement of snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing along all limits of clearing and around any individual trees to be preserved within clearing areas. This shall be done to the satisfaction of the Environmental Protection Director, and said fencing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration: Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2020, Final Plat Variance for Number 1186, Map of Wade Subdivision. Whereas the planning board has considered the request of Main Avenue LLC for the following variance within the subdivision Number 1186, Map of Wade Subdivision, pursuant to Section 322.30.4 of the Building Zone Ordinance of the Code of the Town of Smithtown. Now therefore be it first resolved that the planning board hereby grants variances from the Building Zone Ordinance of the Code of the Town of Smithtown within the subdivision Number 1186, Map of Wade Subdivision, as follows: Blows the modification of dimensional requirements. This table shall be shown on the final map to be filed in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. A fee of $1,000 is required for these variances. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2020, Subdivision Final Plat Approval for Number 1186, Map of Wade Subdivision. Whereas the planning board has considered the request of Main Avenue LLC Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Main Avenue LLC to subdivide 2.576 acres into two lots, now therefore be it first resolved that the final plat of Number 1186, Map of Wade Subdivision, is hereby approved subject to the following conditions: A, posting of a performance bond in form and amount specified by separate resolution of the Planning Board and for a term of two years; B, posting of a general liability insurance policy to run concurrently with the term of the performance bond and in accordance with other provisions of Section 248 of the Code of the Town of Smithtown; C, payment of an inspection fee and cash deposit as established by separate resolution of the Planning Board; D, all necessary dedication papers shall be submitted by the applicant to the Planning Department in complete and accurate form as one package, including but not limited to the performance bond, liability insurance policy, title report, and all required fees; E, the final plat shall include all information required by Section 248-15, 248-16 of the Town Subdivision Regulations, the conditions of approval in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. A checkprint of the final plat shall be submitted to the Planning Department for review before the milers are prepared; F, payment of a park fee of $2,190; G, final approval of the drainage and regressing plans to the satisfaction of the town engineer; H, development of Lot 1 shall be subject to obtaining variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals to alter environmentally sensitive land, slopes in excess of 15%, and build within 10 feet of slopes 25% or greater. Approval of this subdivision by the Planning Board is not an approval or an endorsement of future variance requests subject to the Board of Zoning Appeals. I, asphalt curbing on Oakside Drive shall be replaced with concrete curbing as directed by the Highway Department. J, the only structures permitted in the conservation easement on Lot 2 are sanitary or septic systems required by the Suffolk County Health Department; K, the building envelope for Lot 1 on the filed map shall be amended to reflect the modified front yard and rear yard setbacks; L, prior to the commencement of construction activities at the subject parcel, including land clearing or other site preparation work, the applicant shall abide by the following conditions: One, all limits of clearing and any individual trees to be preserved within the clearing areas must be marked with snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing. Said fencing shall be located no closer to the trunk on any tree to be preserved than the drip line of said tree. This area to be preserved shall be indicated in the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by William J. Lottie, licensed professional engineer, dated July 18, 2019; Two, upon completion of the installation of fencing as required above, the applicant shall provide written notice to the Department of Environment and Waterways requesting inspection of the limits of clearing as marked in the filed field by sighted fencing; Three, the applicant shall not commence construction activities, including land clearing or other site preparation work, until the marked limits of clearing are approved in writing by the Environmental Protection Director; And four, the snow fence or orange mesh construction fencing used to delineate the limits of clearing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. Second resolve that the chairman of the Planning Board is hereby authorized to sign the final plat, hereby approving said plat after the town board has accepted a performance bond of satisfactory form and amount; Third resolve that the conditional final approval of said final plat shall expire 180 days after the date of this resolution and within 62 days after the chairman of the Planning Board signs the final maps of this plat, unless said plat shall have been duly filed or recorded in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2020, Authorization to Sign Performance Bond Estimate for Number 1186, Map of Wade Subdivision. Whereas the town departments of engineering, traffic safety, highway, and planning have prepared a performance bond estimate to cover the costs of all required public improvements, now therefore be it first resolved that the chairman of the Planning Board is authorized to sign the performance bond estimate for Number 1186, Map of Wade Subdivision, in the amount of $42,830, and establish an inspection fee of $3,426, and a cash deposit of $1,000. Therefore, the amount of the performance bond to be posted with the town shall be $41,830.
Thank you, Matt. Biggie, thanks. Does any member of the board have any questions about this application?
Yeah, just one, Matt. Taking into consideration the history of Oakside Realty, the town amended the resolution for the subdivision in 2019, is that correct?
Yes.
Is this the final lot that will be allowed?
Correct.
So this will be it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
No other questions? In the matter of...
Also, before, there's a letter from Don King.
Yes, there's a letter here from Don King, Donald King, regarding this matter, and he asks us to please approve the subdivision application per planning's recommendation. And so, in the matter of Number 1186, Map of Wade Subdivision, I move that we recess the hearing to the July 15, 2020 meeting of this board.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion adopted. And that concludes tonight's hearing. And thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
There we go.